So, uh, next, we have approved the minutes of January 8th. We came out of an executive session with, with no action taken. And we approved the minutes off camera and we are back on camera at five minutes for public comment. Sir.
I'll be very appreciative, thank you. I'm John Cadone, I'm the unit director of the Fairhaven Boys and Girls Club. I just need to have a public clarification on something that came up. We were talking with town about possibly working with them and combining our summer program with town summer program, which is seven weeks. And apparently the rumor going around town now because of some members that came from my executive director that were misconstrued. And I'm getting feedback now that the Fairhaven Boys and Girls Club wants to take over the whole Fairhaven town rectifier. That's not, that wasn't my fault or my intent, okay? My director did send out a memo explaining what they did in Randolph, Vermont for a number of years. I explained to him that we're not even ready to talk about anything else but the summer camp program. That's the only we're talking about and we would report directly to the town if we did that. Apparently that's not gonna happen and that's fine, but we was, and we will still be running our summer program after the town program, which we did last year. The town program ended at two, we took over at two, went to six o'clock. The same program we do on the after-school program, we're feeding the kids a snack and then dinner at five and we went swimming, we did tennis camp and fishing camp. So, I just want the town selectmen to know that we have no intention of taking over the program. Anything we did would be to help save the town money, improve the program, but we would at all times be responsible to whoever the leadership was, if it's the town manager or if it was your rect director that you are planning to hire. Okay? That's all they need to say, to come and say, okay? Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir, for coming here. Thanks, Sean. Department head reports. You wanna start?
Would you like me to, Bob?
Um, yeah, can we do his department head and the water meters as well?
Yeah, I'd like to give you a quick proposal on what I feel is a needed upgrade for our water meters in the town and, um... Can I have one of these? Um, I put together the numbers the best I possibly can. You know, our water meters are right now, they were put in in 1984, they're thirty-five years old, they were suggested they be replaced within fifteen to twenty years. So I tried to put together this proposal and we're looking at nine hundred and fifty connections, the meters are a hundred and seventy-five bucks a piece. I was gonna try to do one hundred and twenty per year, which will take me eight years to get this done. You can see the math I've done on this. I think that, to make a long story short, I, because when Jeff came up, I tried to show, and I asked you guys to come up and take a look at your water plant, I tried to show that I think that we've done so many updates on machinery and equipment, you know, we've really done very well. I really think that I can come up with certain line items out of the budget, you know, on a sixty-three eighty, I know you don't wanna have these numbers in front of you, but I have some, I have some areas, repair and maintenance supplies, you know, small tools and equipment, et cetera, et cetera. I have, um, building and improvements, you know, there's an example, I still have thirty-six-hundred left for this year and out of my machinery and equipment, I still have ninety-three-hundred. Different things like that. I think I can come up with twenty-one thousand dollars per year and replace a hundred and twenty of these meters. I really think I can replace a hundred and twenty before July first. And so I'm gonna need, when we go over the budget in March and April of this year, I just want you guys to know, I think I can pull these numbers from different other areas in the budget without too much pain for anyone.
For this, on this budget?
I wanna start right now, as soon as the weather starts. And the problem, the whole problem here is that I can no longer purchase repair parts for our old meters. There, and this is, this is the technology that is there, I have no choice to go to a radio read type system, there's nothing else out there. When we get the software, like you can see, I gave you the numbers, twenty-one hundred bucks for the software, an antenna for a vehicle is twelve hundred bucks, a tablet is a hundred and eighty dollars. This tablet is your drive-by residences in the house, it will let them know, it will let us know if there's a continuous water usage, like there's a leak. It will let us know if it's about to freeze, there will be alarm set points, it'll let us know if it was tampered with. And so, you'll be able to tell customers, you know, listen, they're not happy with their water bill, you can say this water was used at such and such a date and this is the equivalent of your quarterly bill. This is why it is what it is. And like I'm telling you, I can give you the names of all the pit, all the places, um... There's no other technology out there, you have to go with what they've got.
Well, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't seem like we have a, we have a choice or, or that it's...
I didn't wanna put it to you like that.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it sounds like it's time.
I have to start somewhere, like I said, I can no longer buy repair parts for the meters that we have there. I will tell you, and this bothered me, I'm gonna be quick about it, EJ Prescott. We spent twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars on our present meter reading equipment right now and it's begun to fail two years ago. I had to rewalk South Main Street and River Street and this last quarter, I had to rewalk all of Conerden, First, Second, Mechanic and Third Street, is on another book, it dropped all the information, I had to redo it all. After we spent twenty-five thousand dollars to originally buy all this equipment, I got told on the phone, because I didn't buy the yearly twenty-five hundred dollar service contract, we don't wanna help you.
At all.
That's what they told me. We don't wanna help you. And I never even had the choice, I never even realized that I was supposed to have a service contract for this equipment. So now, now I'm gonna get ready to start going to read meters tomorrow, you know, for February, we're getting ready for February, I'm gonna start reading meters tomorrow and hopefully it will do what it's supposed to do so I won't have to redo it, whatever. So, this is what we've got, you guys can of course take your time and think about, I gotta, there's a meeting tomorrow morning at ten o'clock right here with the people from FW Web, is who we wanna get these meters from, there's a meeting here at ten o'clock if you wanna come in and, we've already talked to them, we've already talked to them. And, um, we've already talked to them and they know exactly what we need, but once again, I really don't feel I have any, any choice at all.
We gotta get, we gotta get bids for these, huh?
It's a lot of money, yeah, I would feel more comfortable putting out something.
It's nice, I, uh, Web's certainly reputable company, but...
I, I think, I think the, I think the EJ Prescott for water and wastewater industry type problems has got all of New England locked up. I don't think you're gonna have other bids. There's times when I can only buy parts, you know, at certain places and they, and they cha, they charge astronomical fees and that's why water bills are high. That, that, that's part of it, you know, that's the way it is.
We have to try.
Yeah, 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 yup, yup, you got it, John, yup, yup, and, um, so...
You're also, you're not gonna buy all those meters at once, are you?
No, it's over eight-year period, like I figured I could do, um, a hundred and twenty and, and I don't wanna do them in the winter, so a hundred and twenty divided by eight months is fifteen, fifteen meters per month, but that's, that's what I'm looking at. And of course, this doesn't have to be decided on tonight, but I have to let you know that I, I, I don't see, we can't go, I haven't, I can't buy repair parts.
You're not...
What are we gonna do with the rest of the meters if we can't buy spare parts?
We're gonna turn them into scrap metal for...
No, I mean, the ones that we're gonna, you're only doing a hundred and twenty a year.
Yup.
Well, you keep, you keep the other ones prepared, right?
No, you can't put them back in, right?
You can't, because of the lead, lead laws that came out in two thousand and fourteen, I can go into a house and I can work on the meter for somewhat, but I can't remove the meter and put it back in. And that causes problems.
So you could take...
If something freezes on a base of a leaded brass meter, that's a problem, I have to have something I can physically replace it with, other than that meter.
But you could take the guts from the ones you're taking out and put them into another meter to replace, to fix.
Yup, 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 yup.
And you would probably, if you have a meter fail, you'll go to the new one. Or will you just do streets with new ones?
I, I, I'm gonna have to just go with whoever will let me in their house. And I'm just saying, that's, that's part of the problem I have too, you know, I'll, you know, I'll be very careful, but the ordinance says you have to have a meet, you have to have a shut-off on both sides of the meter.
Yup.
For instance, I'll go in there, there'll be houses where I go in there and if I touch that shut-off on one side, it's gonna break. And I'll, I'll be careful as I can be, but then I have to have someone who's gonna stand behind me and say, listen, I, I'm not a plumber, I'll try to be careful, but it's like, I'm sorry homeowner, I broke your plumbing, but you'll have to get it replaced.
That's not gonna go over pretty well. They're gonna play it careful.
I'm just trying to give you some heads up on that.
Yeah.
And also, and also, what if I, what if I were to, what if I were to see a spigot like for a garden hose plumbed in before the meter? There's gonna have to be times when I'm gonna have to say, I, I have the, I have the backing of the select board, they're, they're saying to me, we'll give you thirty days for us to come back in here, you better have that repaired with a shut-off on both ends with no spigot for garden hose on town side of the meter.
You definitely have that if there's a spigot for a garden hose.
Yeah.
Yup, gotcha, gotcha.
We, that's all, that's all the, you know, the what-if stuff, I mean, we gotta talk about how we wanna do this. I think we, I, I'm certainly in favor of doing that for you. But, and I, I'd like to know where you're gonna get the money, the twenty-one thousand plus the, plus the twenty-one hundred, you probably need that, the software of the year, right off. I mean, if, I mean, we could work it into next year's budget, but if you wanna start this spring, then we gotta figure out this year's budget, where it's coming from. Which is, I mean, if you think you have it, that's great, we just need to know how and where. I, I mean, I trust you that you know what you're, you know, where it's coming from.
That's where I just try to say, if the, if the furnace hadn't failed at the water plant after two years, we would've been golden. We would've really been doing good. There's been substantial upgrades throughout the plant. And I think that I can come up with quite a bit of money out of the sixty-three eighty dollar rate, but, um...
Well, that's, that's...
There's not much of a cost on the monitor just to be going.
Yeah. Yeah. That's, that's the, um...
It feels like you should get together with the town manager, put together bids spec for the base, software, antenna, stuff from a couple of different...
What's the hosting fee, Tom?
From a couple of different people.
It's a yearly thing, yup.
Yeah.
And maybe the first year's meters.
Yup, yup.
So that you have, and someone might offer you a flat rate on the next few years' meters. They might, they might be willing to deal with you on some of that stuff.
I guess, I guess, I, I wish I could answer those questions better, ten o'clock tomorrow morning.
Right, I'm hoping Joe asks that question one more.
Please, yup.
I ask for free, I ask for free meters already.
No, I don't even want to do that. But, uh, 'cause we do have to do some kind of bid process here.
Yeah.
So I just have to have something that I can replace them with, you know, and that's why I'm in a little bit. We tried to go through the other companies, we tried to go through them and, um, like I told you, after we spent so much money for a re, meter reading equipment, 'cause I didn't have the yearly service contract, I didn't get that, they said, we, we don't really wanna help you because you didn't do this. And I, you know, and this was the company we were going with to buy these other type of meters.
Yeah.
And this was after, you know, I just said to them, we're basically telling you, we're gonna spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars with your company. And that's when I told them, forget it, we're gonna find someone else. And this is when I found this other company. That's why, that's why...
Well, and, and probably what you're gonna get is, you're probably gonna get stonewalled from the company, but we need to, we need to make sure we, we do this on the up and up.
Yup.
However, I don't, is anybody diametrically opposed to the idea?
No.
So, run with it.
And worst case, worst case you have to stretch it out to ten years.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Make it work with your budget.
Absolutely.
Somehow, I don't have...
But I, I would try to work it in where you, you know, maybe, maybe you bid it out and you say, you know, we're not buying it all this year, but we'd like, you know that the town is gonna buy nine hundred of these meters.
I can watch the numbers where I don't go over. I really believe I can watch the numbers, so I won't, I know I won't go over. But I don't know, I don't know if I can put it out to a bid to like, where I can get three different vendors for this, for this type of... I'm, I'm trying to look at it like, this is where, is this where we wanna go in the future?
Lean on this guy.
Okay.
He's good at that.
And if you don't get three bids, you've at least, you've tried.
No, no.
You gotta try, we, we gotta do this right.
Okay.
And we just can't walk into Web's and say we wanna buy a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars worth of... They would be happy to do that. You know, but...
I, yeah.
And you wanna make sure that you gotta, when you do this guy, if you go through this and you set up for an eight-year program, you gotta make sure that we're gonna get a, a price on these meters for our eight years, so we're not gonna buy three years of meters and the fourth year the meters skyrocket.
Well, they got a, they got a twenty-year warranty, I know if that helps.
I'm saying price-wise, I mean, you gotta make sure...
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
That'll be a question for tomorrow, if that helps, that'll be a question for tomorrow.
Yeah, and there's plenty of, there's all kinds of ways that people do that. So, you know, they, if, whoever, Howard, there's guarantees, there's guarantees, they can buy it, when they buy it, they can find a price. There's a million ways to do it, it's just, let's keep it, let's keep it in our, in our process and bid ordinance and, and have at it.
What's, uh, what's in your, I'm wondering if we could think about this another way and use some reserve, you have some capital replacement funds, use some reserve to buy, like, more meters at once and then...
I was hoping to get an upgrade for the van.
Yup. But what I, but then you could use, in next year's budget, we could move some money around and replace the reserve account money over time.
Okay.
So then, that would answer some of these questions on...
This doesn't have, I'm sorry...
Price per meter.
This doesn't have to be an eight-year thing, it could be ten or twelve, I was trying to make, part of that is to make it easier on Beverly, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be, uh, the older meters and the newer meters as we continuously update. I can't, you know, no, no town wants to do it all at once.
I think you told me it's gonna save, if you had the whole town wired like this, it's gonna save you like a week, week and a half.
Yeah, that will too, but then again, if you look, just one thing quickly, it's like, Maple Fields and the high school, Skyline and McDonald's, we changed those four meters. Skyline and McDonald's are, McDonald's stay the same, Skyline isn't a good example, but the high school and Maple Fields, those four meters cost eight thousand, no, they were four thousand, five hundred dollars. And it's like, they're already paying for themselves, just 'cause of the high school and Maple Fields. They were reading, they were reading bad for quite a while. And so those things, and I'm just saying, that was a twenty-six percent increase just in those two, those two, those two bills. And I, I don't wanna be the water police, I don't wanna be the water, but I just, I, I think they'll pay for themselves.
I think it's in your contract.
Man, they're three, like I did...
You see, you see where I'm going with that, huh?
Yeah.
Like maybe we can actually buy all the stuff when we know, we could bid it out, buy it all and then work on backfilling our reserve.
It'd be worth seeing if...
There's gotta be a price advantage to do it.
There's gotta be a price advantage by an eight-hundred meters.
Sounds like it's a discussion tomorrow.
Well, there's ways to get around that, I mean...
Questions asked tomorrow, that's all, I'm just asking questions.
Yeah, it is, but do we wanna sit on all those meters, uh?
Well, then you just put them in, you just put them in faster.
You know, in eight years, there's gonna be, there's gonna be some improvements.
Two purchases, though.
Yeah, but you're not gonna be able to, that's the deal, all your software to read them is gonna be the same.
Yes, the software will...
So you've made the decision today what meter you're gonna go with for the next eight years.
Right.
I would say, twenty years.
Twenty years, but...
Wouldn't you agree with that?
But there's, there's...
We looked at what's out there and this is the best, they're, they're, they're not arrogant to do.
No, I agree, I...
It's like, sad, but...
Well, we're not, yeah, and we're, we're, except for what we do this year, you know, and entering, if we enter in an agreement, um, we're talking about the budget that starts in July one.
Gotcha.
So, so we've got a little wiggle room.
Yes.
Except for what you wanna do this year and, and so, it's still water and sewer budget, we're not there yet.
Right.
You know, so, we're still okay, I mean, we've still got some time to, to, to figure, you got time to get some bids.
I, yeah, I guess this as long as soon, if I could be allowed to say, this is the company we're gonna go with.
Yeah.
This is the, I can see what's out there, I'll give you all the literature, but it's like, these are the ones...
My guess, you're, you're meeting here tomorrow, you're meeting here tomorrow is, I mean, that becomes proprietary, they're not gonna let you have all their, all their specs and all their thing, if they understand, and you should make it very clear that you're, you've gotta get bids.
We're, oh yeah, we're, we're just, we're gonna take twelve of these meters on a trial One is a larger, one is a larger meter for the carriage house right behind the Parkview House and the other eleven are for standard household, which I could get some volunteers, I'm saying, whatever.
That way I'll live long enough.
Now, I can see exactly how these work, whatever they are.
I don't want you reading my meter.
What are we, what are we gonna see, like if, if...
There's a problem, reading this all.
What's the homeowner gonna see for more?
Well, from the homeowner, they can, they can see what we see, but they're not gonna be, I mean, I, I don't know that for sure, maybe they can have their own application on a cellphone.
I mean, that'd be pretty cool.
They can do their thing and they can track theirs, but...
That's pretty cool, I mean, that'll be great for people, yeah.
I would think people would volunteer for that.
Especially if you got an apartment or something, yeah.
Does Web a middleman for these meters?
Yeah.
You, you can but get a program so that way everybody can see their meters, but it's, the, the cost is exorbitant.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's very, very expensive.
Oh, so it's not...
You had to have your own cell towers, et cetera, we would've had to put up another tower and these things in town and other things like that, we, we went for the middle of the road type expense, like a hundred and seventy-five bucks a piece.
Um, what's the, what's the difference between what you're doing today? You, you walk to every house and within a certain range, fifteen, twenty feet, beep, you get...
Not to touch every house.
Have to touch the house.
Not to touch every house, yeah.
Right. The new ones, you're gonna drive down the road and back in the van.
Yup.
And it's gonna pick them up.
Yup.
How much time is that gonna save you, on average?
Do a lot of shoe repair. I'm saying, sixteen hours per person, four times a year.
Oh, so we're not...
Twenty hours per person, forty hours, forty hours, four times a year. It's not a lot, it's not a lot to walk through, but...
Oh, okay. It's like a week's worth of work, every quarter.
At least per person. In February, I need three weeks. I don't know why, you know, you don't know what's gonna be happening, there's a four-thousand pounds of ice and snow, you're gonna fall off the roof on top of your head.
That's right.
You know, so, you know, February's a little more difficult, though.
So that should speed things up.
How are you? How are you gonna read the twelve meters without the machinery?
They're gonna, they're gonna give us the equipment so we can take everything on a trial run, is what the plan is.
I would make sure that you can follow the bid policy, right?
And I, I think, at that point, at that point, it's, it's, they have to understand that we, we have to bid this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that's way more than what...
Yeah, yeah.
I would definitely, yeah, just make sure they know before that equipment comes in.
I mean, it, the technicality is, we already have a budget for this year, you know, it's not for that, it's not specifically for that, but it's for machinery and equipment, I suppose. You could do something with the twelve.
But you think you still have to bid it?
You still have to bid.
Oh, well, the twelve might come in under policy.
Yeah, under, yeah, under it. It's a trial, but they need to understand, I don't wanna...
Exactly, I'm with you.
If you don't go with them the next time and you got twelve meters that are gonna be different than nothing else.
Yeah.
I just, I think you better go through a bid process first, make sure we got everything set in stone so we're not doing something where it's gonna come back and bite us later on.
Yeah, I, I really...
Or is the trial, or are they gonna just take them out if you don't like them? They just leave?
But you can't put the ones back in, they took out.
That's true.
Got it.
Let's play this by the rule, let's play it by the rules and if it means that it's back a few weeks...
Good, yup, very good.
Then well, that's fine.
But move forward.
Yeah. Move forward with baby steps.
I understand.
Clean some, anything else, so... As long as we got you.
No, thank you, I think I'm gonna say it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mark.
Yeah, we'll get, get some things ironed out and those are all very good questions and, you know, I gotta do, I gotta do something and I've been, I've been trying, we invited the other company to come and look and we, you know, we were, and then we got, we got treated horribly is what it comes down to, and they know that.
Well, they, they shouldn't be surprised by it.
These meters are a hundred...
They got you, water and waste, water and wastewater industry type, they, they know they've got you and it's like sad, really.
These meters are somewhere a little less than two hundred bucks. Does, uh, the, the meters you put in today, how much are those?
You mean the ones that are presently in the house?
Mm-hmm. Like if you just kept putting those in?
I'll, I could tell you, it's sixty-two dollars for the repair parts.
Uh-uh, the plastic ones that you can't repair?
Those are a hundred and thirty-eight.
Okay, so not, not huge.
And they, and they, they took on other problems, you know, but with the remote on the side of the house, they had a special adapter thing that goes over that, so they could be into this, into this new technology. But, um, they, they said to me, even to upgrade our handheld device to get it working like it's supposed to be, I'm hoping it's gonna work here this quarter, like I'm going out tomorrow, but that was fourteen thousand dollars.
Well, it's really gotta work for another eight years.
Uh-huh, uh-huh, we're trying to get them so they'll all upload into the newest, the newest one that we have, there's one older, one newer, we're hoping that all of the eight books for Fairhaven can go into one, one that may work, but...
All the more reason to accelerate the plan. You see, not paying...
I didn't mean to do that, they left me, they left me high and dry, telling me they don't wanna help me.
Yeah, I think we're...
It's sad.
Yeah, we understand that, but it's not, we're not faulting you, we just wanna play by the rules.
Sure thing, yup, yup. All right, well, I'll try to get some more answers tomorrow, wait.
Good luck.
You're gonna be there for that?
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you very much.
Stop by anytime, we're always here, on and always.
Spring doughnuts, can we say that?
We're still into bourbon ads, you got anything?
Um, just a quick update on the First Street junk ordinance violation that the town, the judicial bureau did rule and the town's favor. Due to the winter, they gave us until January twentieth to work out a deal with the defendant to remove the item or to come into compliance with the ordinance. I did meet with him, did do an outline on an agreement, our manager reviewed it and subsequently, before I could call him back, I noticed that there was an appeal filed on our rule, so I don't know how that's gonna...
No, I was gonna ask you that question. Yeah, I was gonna ask you that question.
Now, that, and it surprised me, because I, like I said, I had met with him, and he was all, he, he actually, he laid, outlaid the agreement on what he, what he wanted to do. Which was beneficial to everybody, and then we got the notice of appeal, so, and I have, I have not been able to reach him since that. So I'm gonna try to follow up, and then I'll leave you guys in a state on it, I can't go into much detail with it. And then, we're trying to ga- na- navigate through a, which I believe is gonna be a heated property dispute on Bigelow Hill Road over a right away. Um, it's been ratcheting up every weekend today, the gate got locked, and then the gate got, lock got cut, so we're dealing with that now. So just give you a heads up, if you hear something that's probably gonna escalate it up, um, some property on Bigelow Hill. We did get keys for fire rescue, us, um, when the locks put on, so we will bail that access. If for some reason, we need to get to a residence that's on the other end. But, that's all I have for the moment, if you guys have any information.
Make sure you get a new key for the new lock.
It's been done already, so.
Do I own dogs?
Anybody got a question for the chief?
No.
Hey, thanks. You, you're torn.
Uh, so we got some numbers from the, if you guys remember, you guys, we, uh, started a early bird process for the dump stickers. Uh, we ran some numbers, and we have eighty-seven for, eighty-seven more purchased, uh, before December thirty-first than we did last year. So, seemingly it had a, a slight effect, so, that's positive.
What's this idiot?
You forgot?
Did you forget?
I did too.
Oh, well, someone's gotta pay.
Yes, a great idea.
Yeah, we just wanted to pay our fair share, that's what we're doing.
So, uh.
Back to the town.
For, uh, for everybody else who didn't get their sticker yet, Beverly is gonna be in the town office this Saturday, this coming Saturday, and the Saturday after that. Um, like we talked about before, when, if you go and you don't have your dump sticker, the, the folks are gonna kick you out of there and tell you to go buy one. They're gonna send you here, um, after two weeks, they're just gonna shut you down, then you're not gonna be able to dump anymore, so please get your sticker.
Are there signs up?
Uh, they should have signs, and they should be, have been warning people for at least a month.
No sign down there says they're available, when the price is left.
Oh, okay, available, but the, the, the cutoff dates is.
That's on there.
Is it on there?
I, I don't know, I haven't been there in a while.
I missed it.
January one every year. Currently, there are five, we had more than seven hundred stickers purchased last year, uh, so we have an outstanding of five hundred-some stickers. Yeah.
Well, the people at the dump have gotta get out of the shanty, and make sure they tell them that they gotta get it done.
Yep.
It, it really shouldn't.
We can't depend on, on our girl here in the office all the time.
Yeah, that, that should.
And she shouldn't have to get on her and sit the sell tickets.
I think it's a good thing that she's here, I think that's, that's a good, good compromise, but I don't think she should have to.
Is there any chance of using that sign that they can change the letters on, put it out front, the, for purchase of tickets?
Oh, yeah, well, it's, it's a good idea.
Good idea.
New dump stickers, past due.
Uh, we hired a new DPW laborer, Mr. Duke Martin, his first day is the twenty-first. I'll bring him in on twenty-ninth for a meet and greet, uh, well-qualified, class B license, uh, worked for the, the New York State. Doing exactly what we need him to do, patching holes, plowing, ditching, running all the equipment, graders. I think he's gonna be a good addition, I think he can be a good solid, long-term addition, uh, you know, knock on wood. Oh, oh, this is good news, uh, so we did move to the second round in the playground grant, the, I forget how much it was. Hundred and fifty thousand dollar playground grant, I have to go give a presentation on Friday, the eighteenth, so that's this Friday. If any board members would like to come, I could use some help, uh, right now, it's just me on the docket, and it's always nice to show some, uh, some.
Where's this meeting?
Berlin.
The eighteen?
Yes, the eighteen.
Susanna's Restaurant?
What day is it?
Friday.
The, the presentation is in Berlin?
It's in Berlin.
Joe, did you give any thought to what I emailed you about reaching out to?
I haven't reached out yet.
It was just a, an idea, reach out to, uh, Bill and my dad, because Berlin's right next door, Mount Peter, maybe, I mean, there's no way I can go. Friday, but maybe they can get out for a little bit.
I'm sure we're not busy.
No, I will, it was a good idea, yeah. I will reach out, 'cause it would be nice to have them sitting at the table.
Chances are, probably not, but.
Uh, what else do we got going? Uh, if you were, if you managed to hit the transfer station, well, a lot about garbage this year, or this, this meeting. Uh, if you did go to the transfer station on Saturday, you might have seen somebody doing some community service for us. Uh, this is the guy that we've, uh, ticketed on Prospect Street, or River Street, along with the mountain of garbage.
Prospect.
Prospect, um, he's down there, he's giving us three days of labor, um, or in return, he's gonna be able to dump his garbage. Uh, we threatened to, if the chief is still here, we threatened to ticket him, he doesn't have a job. So we could give, we could leave a ticket on his doorstep all day long, and that's not gonna help. Um, this is not something, uh, and I want to stress this, this is not labor for, to just to dump your garbage, this isn't something I plan on doing often, so. If people think this is gonna be just a free ride to dump, that's, it's.
Yeah, but he's working out, he's working basically out of fine, that would have been a fine.
Yes, exactly right.
Instead of going through court system, we, we're, we're helping him, and he's helping us, so, I guess one hand washes the other.
And he's showing a commitment to.
At least, at least he's doing it, I mean, that's.
I, I just don't want people to think, hey, I'll give you a day's work, kinda dump this mountain of garbage, it's, this is a very extenuating circumstance.
He came down within, you know, twenty minutes from me talking to him, he was here.
Yeah.
So he, he wants to do something about it, he wants to take care of it.
Yeah, he said that he had a job, and he was for UPS, and was supposed to last through the fifteenth of January, obviously, they cut him off after Christmas. He said, I really have no money, I wanna get rid of it, I just don't have jobs.
Fair enough.
You know, and that's how small towns work, right, it's like, help us out. Uh, and, we receive, so we, we asked for a little bit more money for the donations for the, the playground grant as match. And we received three more donations, a total of almost five hundred dollars. Uh, one from Exit One Storage for one ninety-seven, uh, Dapper Dogs for one ninety-seven, and then BT Structural Slate also donated a hundred and ninety-seven. Yeah, so we're up to almost five thousand dollars now, just in cash donations from our businesses.
How'd they pick one ninety-seven?
That was, so the slips I sent out, there was, we have something like almost seventy businesses, and I divided the required match by those businesses, and it came up to.
If everybody did.
If everybody donated, one ninety-seven would have covered the entire, yeah.
Why don't you send another, you said you sent out a seventy businesses? Why don't you send another letter out with what we've reached, maybe with our goal?
I, I'm a little uncomfortable.
Keep hitting the businesses.
Hit the businesses, I mean, I, I mean, I, they get hit by everybody, you know, and, um, uh, it, I'm, I'm proud of them for doing what they did, man, I, I tell you. But, uh, you know, every grade school, every high school, you know, the chess club is going to, well, you know, it, everybody hits the businesses. I, I'm glad they did what they did, but I think we got as much as we should try to get from them.
Yeah, no, it's, we sent two letters, and, uh, we're done.
Oh, you sent two?
I sent them one, and done, it's two, and done.
So, so I've been the guy to set something down and forget about it, and I would appreciate somebody reminding me, so I figure, you know, a reminder.
Fair enough.
Yeah, um, and, uh, we did start doing highway, governor's highway safety again. Uh, these are the sheets that are gonna be attached to the, the pace lips, I highlighted, you know, where the, uh, where the patrol is taking place. And then the mileage to start and stop, so, this didn't make it into the packets, it came in late. Uh, but just to keep everybody, you know, everything above board, what, what's going on, and where it's going on. I'll, I can hand these out.
Alright, dude.
And that's all I have for you.
Questions for the town manager? At this point. Okay, we'll move on.
Whoops, I'm sorry, I do have one more thing, uh, the town manager, uh, has his one-year anniversary on the, on the eighteenth of next month. Uh, and there's a.
Large celebration?
I didn't say leaving.
I thought, I thought you said you were gonna go have us all down to the Fairhaven Inn or something.
But there's a performance review, and I get those to you.
Well, I proposed a Fairhaven Inn before the reviews.
Oh, yeah, and I'm buying the drink. And I'm really done.
We have the paperwork.
We have.
We've already done it.
Yeah, well, we haven't done one in a while, so. We should do it.
He's gonna put it in our.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get you the paperwork, yeah, just give me a heads up.
Repetition.
Okay.
It's good that you bring that up. And like, just go by.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, we've talked about water meters, um, compactor box replacement.
So we did get, uh, three bids on this, um, one of them was just outrageous at nine thousand. And we got another one for eighty-seven hundred, and one for, uh, fifty-eight, but fifty-eight also includes, we need to get, get it delivered here. So, um, almost seven thousand.
Where's it coming from?
This guy's in Pennsylvania.
So something we could send, we could contract capital and do it.
What, I don't know how the board feels, but, um, we can spend three thousand to patch this thing up, rough estimate, three thousand.
Um, how old is it, do you know?
It, it, I don't, yeah.
Probably when we broke off from the rotten solid waste.
That was one of the ones, yeah, we bought that years.
Yeah, that, that's.
It's been a long time, it was, I would say it was in the.
And no one will give us anything?
It was in the nineties, probably.
We can take it for scrap, but the.
But no one will buy it.
Yeah, the, I asked the guy that had it, that said he could fix it, he doesn't, he's not interested.
Gary, where's the? Well, we could, why couldn't you still just put it down there for storage, or some, something else that they didn't have to haul away? You know, I mean, that they wouldn't have to move the container, but you could.
Like tires?
Yeah, or some guy, yeah, something that got ran, you know, started getting more, just.
Well, something that we're, yeah, yeah, something that we're piling on the ground now.
And then move it again.
And we move it again anyways.
Put it undercover, so you get it another easier, you know? Um, I don't, I don't think we should junk it, I think we should, we get to know and just move this from the side, and we can figure something to do with it later on.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be a waste to throw something, really cut it away.
I mean, to cut it up would be ridiculous.
Okay.
Having, you have more invested in cutting it up than you would.
So, do we have a, uh, yeah, do we have a motion for?
Didn't, uh, the question I had on this, on the Stone Valley Welding one, um, the fifty-eight hundred dollars. They're gonna, the one box, they're gonna charge the fifty-eight hundred.
Yeah, I don't.
Cause I see where he, it's two, and I was wondering if there's gonna be a different price if we just got one.
You mean, would one box be more, no, no, I talked to him about this, and it's only, it's fifty-eight hundred.
It's still twelve hundred bucks to have it delivered.
Yeah, 'cause he can fit two containers on one truck, so if he's trying, sending the truck, he's, he just sending the truck.
So we're still seven thousand for that one box, compared to.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven on the other one, and.
Is there a reason?
Oh my god, on the third one.
Is there a reason we'd need a second one, or does anybody, is there anybody that'd want a second one, that we could split the freight?
Well, what about if, give Castle and Callum, see if you need the one?
Right.
I mean, if we've got, if we get a price like this.
It sounds like you could get.
They'll, we have, they'll deliver both of them, they'll deliver both of them for twelve hundred.
Yeah.
But they're gonna deliver, if they bring one, it's still gonna be twelve hundred, 'cause it's still the same truck.
Talk to Paul, need to talk to Jonas.
I will.
But otherwise, I'd, I'd say.
I think we should, I think we should purchase the one from this.
Make that a motion?
I'll make a motion that we purchased a, a forty-yard compa- compactor box roll-off from Stone Valley Welding in Huntington, Pennsylvania.
Where's it coming out of, Bobby?
And that's the second part of this.
Haven't heard the motion yet.
Stone Valley, what?
Stone Valley Welding.
Stone or Stone?
Stone.
Stone.
Where is there, okay, go ahead, there's a second.
A second, so we discussed this.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, okay.
Plus shipping we gotta have in here too, so.
Yeah.
Well, that's in there, right?
It's fifty-eight plus twelve hundred for shipping.
Seven thousand dollars for the box.
Right.
Box and shipping, if we get just one.
Coming out of where, no?
It.
I didn't.
Huntington, Pennsylvania.
No.
John's.
Budget. There, there's ten thousand dollars in the capital reserve, the, the budget can't support seven thousand dollars.
Oh, I didn't think so.
Comes out of the, uh, solid waste.
Yeah, that's kinda why I was leaning towards, uh, the repair, it's just, it's a lot of money, and we don't have that much to, in that reserve.
How long will it repair best? Can you ask me? One year repair, or is it?
Yeah, I, yeah, I could ask, I. I'm, I'm sure he wouldn't tell me, it's a year, but, um, yeah, it doesn't hurt to ask, it, it is a lot of money, though, for us right now, at this, at this country.
So we, it, so at this point, we had, we have ten thousand, ninety-nine dollars in.
Did we ask if we could just rent a container? I thought we talked a little bit about that, maybe our current contractor could just supply a container, for less than ten grand.
Uh, it was four yard, I could ask him, see what he'd say. Did we talk about that earlier?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Alright, well then.
Well, let, then I'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, and, and.
Get our numbers on rental?
Yeah.
Is the quotes are good for a minute, can we go two weeks?
Yeah, he didn't say if there's.
They're not gonna change it. They wanna, they wanna sell us a new box.
Yeah, I would think.
Does, does Mr. Lulik with.
Yes, I would.
Motion to table, but wait, I don't.
We will table it for two weeks, okay. Tax stabilization, we're back on that.
What plan?
Oh, Mr. Miggs, is he still here? Come on down, man.
You're, you're, you don't have to.
You're com- if you're comfortable, you can say, if you wanna move up front, you're welcome to.
We did get a, and I'm gonna say upfront, I disagree with him, uh, we did get.
We need to do anything of this in executive?
Uh, I don't.
It's a, it's a, it's a commercial policy.
Okay.
You know, and, and if we're gonna stabilize, and if we're gonna stabilize, we're gonna stabilize.
Yeah.
And we'll, I don't know, it is.
I don't have any problem, I just asked the question.
Um, I mean, it is.
My opinion, I, what do you, what's the rest of you guys feeling on it?
I don't see any reason, good for an executive session for this, really.
Okay. I don't.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Bloomer, uh, reviewed that, and he ru- uh, reviewed the VSA twenty-four, which is what our policy's based on. It's a state policy we abide by, um, and I'll, I'll quote him, he says, I read twenty-four VSA, the VSA. To limit stabilization to renovations of or additions to existing commercial or industrial property, or to new or indus- new commercial or industrial property. Um, so according to Mr. Bloomer, he, and I disagree with him, I, I disagree with him very strongly. Um, but according to the lawyer, that is, the only thing you can abate is the improvements.
Improvement.
That's, that's what, that's the legal opinion, and I have copies of that too, you guys.
Well, that's what, that's what we talked about last week.
Right.
What's the basis of your disagreement?
My basis of disagreement is that the VSA, I mean, it, it clearly says, um, the town, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna read all that. But the town can fix tax, eh, fix the tax applicable to such property at a percentage of an annual tax. Fix the tax applicable to such property at a percentage of the annual tax. So the annual tax, they can fix the annual tax, it says nothing about a, um, improvement.
But our policy does.
Our policy does mention that, yes.
And when you.
And.
When you brought that up to Bloomer?
He, um, he hedged, but he's sticking with his, uh, his opinion.
So the policy does state that, it's only applied towards improvements?
There it.
Our policy.
It doesn't, it, it doesn't say anything in the policy that I can determine here, and it has a tax stabilization chart, which shows.
Percentage.
How it's broken down.
Right.
And it seems like the qualification is ten percent of the real value, or the assessed value of the property.
That's true. I think there's a new copy in here.
It said, that, the sticking point for me, uh, it says improvements to a commercial, an industrial building site, commercial. Site, commercial, greater than ten percent of the current assessed value. And I, the, the more I read that, the more I, I'm over with Jay, and now I guess I'm with, um, our, our lawyer too, is, it's talking about anything above ten percent of the current assessed value. So that would, that says to me improvement, um, that's the way I would vote. So, having said that, and having said what I said last week about really wanting you to be here, um, we can be, I think we can, I personally think we can be pretty liberal in what we're considering improvements as well. But I think we're kind of, we're, we're, Jay makes real good sense about not losing that off, not losing. It, it would be different if it was a brand-new property, I think, because then everything's new. It's, we're not taking it off the grand list, and I, and I think that's, you swayed me on that one, Jay. Plus, I think that does say that, I think it does say that we're, my opinion. Obviously, not a lawyer.
So, it's more of a post-benefit than pre-benefit.
Exactly. Uh, yeah, I guess that's, that's the way of putting it, um.
Basically, gotta finish the project, then come back and have it reappraised.
Right.
And go on time, and then you, that's when you start your.
Which, yes, which means that.
Which is frustrating for him.
Right, yeah, and it, and it's also.
He's not gonna realize.
And we, we're not giving him any incentive, we're not giving him any, any monetary relief right up. Yes.
No, it's not even that. It's that his assessed value is.
It's working on it too.
Assessed value is, is almost meaningless unless he paid what the assessed value was.
No, no, my point is.
If it's assessed at a hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Something.
Hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and he only paid a hundred, the new assessed value is a hundred.
Probably. Any, can you think?
The Supreme Court.
And, and anything above that, and, and ours says ten percent, but anything above that, any improvement that you do above that is, is open to this policy, I think.
The bottom line is, you gotta have it reappraised the first of April.
Right.
Reassessed, and that's, I mean, that's the sticker. Um, unless you have a, a, a private appraiser done and then come back in.
The new appraised value is the sold price, as long as it's an arms-length agreement.
Well, it.
Arms-length sale. Unless he bought it from the father or a, an uncle or, you know, some.
Yeah.
Close family member. It's arms-length, and then the sell price, or the purchase price, is the new market value.
That certainly has been our experience.
That's the state position.
My point is, if he does improvements now, pre, um, the new assessment in April, he doesn't get the benefit of the low assessment.
Cause they'll assess. But he's saying, he's saying.
To take these out of, he.
Right. Rod's saying he's already bought it, though. So, that should.
He's definitely bought it.
So, that should be the assessed.
That is, that's the old assessed value.
That's, that's.
And that is, that is the target.
That doesn't give the, no.
Well, I think we could work on the, on that assumption.
That's your ten, that's your ten percent basis.
Right, and start anything that, that's above that, so. Anything that's above that is, is. But we have to, we'd have to agree with that. We'd, we'd all have to agree to that. And that the, um, stabilization would be on any improvements. We're making an assumption for the listers.
Yeah, we can't, we can't drop the aspe- the assessment. We'll have to go through, we'll have to go through, we'll have to go through authority to do that.
Can you even do that?
I don't, the, the listers were adamant that they didn't wanna do an, an out-of, out-of-cycle assessment, and I don't, I'm, I never really got a reason for that.
That's my problem with the, just on the improvements, because I can't have an A and a B number.
Right.
Right.
I can't have a starting and an ending point.
Well.
Because I asked the listers to come in and do a special one, and they said they don't do that. It's not in their purview.
Well, is it?
It's what I, I'm just telling you what I got for an answer.
We didn't get a good answer.
I've asked Joe to check and.
It was a very clear answer.
He was gonna, let's see if, if we could ask him to do it.
But I don't wanna ask him to do it.
Extra nice.
I don't wanna ask him to do it unless they want that done.
Ooh.
It's not, it's not our place to just start going in and asking for assessments on properties.
Well, yes, it is, and it certainly, it, it's, yes, it is, because, uh, and I'll tell you why.
It's.
If, if we wanna be proactive, and if we want stuff to happen in this town.
No, no.
Eventually, once in a while, you gotta take the horse by the horn.
Not against the landowners.
No, 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 I.
I'm saying, if the landowner doesn't want us to do that.
Okay, okay.
It's not for this board to say, hey, listers, head in there.
Yeah, if, yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
I, okay, that's, that's fair. I, I thought you were just saying that we shouldn't do it.
My question today, we just to have Joe ask these cities and towns, or the state or something, if we can ask the listers to do this, if the property owner requests it. If we can ask them to go do a walkthrough. I mean, that would be, you, the property owner would have to ask us to do it, and then if we could ask the, the listers to do it, but we gotta find out legally if we can do it. They're elected officials. So, it's not like they work directly for the town. They do, but they're voted in.
Yeah. Well. Sometimes you gotta lead.
I know, that's why I'm asking, that's why I was asked to, to see what we can do and can't do. Once again, just like we talked earlier, we gotta make sure, however we do this, we gotta make sure we do it right, so we're not gonna have everybody and their brother come in here saying they want their assessment knocked down, they want tax stabilization.
I agree, but at the same time, we can't waste this time having to come in here every meeting.
So, that's true. Uh, you know, we just have to have, get some answers.
Would you be, would you be willing to have that assessment done?
Sure.
I mean, I, I think that's progress. It's, it's slow progress, but it's progress. Um, now we gotta find out if we, if we can do that legally. Um, and then, then it will move a little faster. I don't see why it wouldn't. Uh, but I've been.
Can we do a little digging on the side too, and just see how, whether that sale price is the assessed value now? Cause that's a true statement. That probably helps you.
Yeah, it does.
Maybe more than what this abatement would be anyway.
It's not, it's not set in stone, and the listers are not gonna say that. That's the first thing, that's the first thing they're gonna, they're gonna come in and tell you that it's worth exactly what.
I think they're gonna.
Hey, I, you gotta, you gotta get a rule from someplace, if somebody, if this is the way it is.
I think they're gonna tell you what they've told us in every BCA meeting. We don't sales chase.
Right.
We don't chase the sale.
Right.
We don't chase the sale.
Right. The, the, the problem, the problem is, Rod is right.
Right.
We, we have, anytime there's been an appeal passed a, passed a BCA, that local BCA, and it goes to the state, they go fair market value. And some of the people on the V, BCA, Mr. Adams particularly, will point that out. And will argue. Every time.
As long as it's arms-length.
It's, yeah, exactly.
That is, that, that is definitely a requirement.
We have never, we've never won one of those, so that, it's a, it's a safe assumption. It's not the, it's probably not the assumption the listers are gonna do. You know? So, it, there's gonna be some dancing. The other thing we should find out is, is we can is, is the, um, procedure through the BCA and, and to the state, does that have a, a, a local, or a, a timeframe, a, a statutory timeframe? I mean, can we do this now, or do we have to wait till April? In May, and then we're, you know, you, you know, I'm not sure. And I, it's really frustrating. But we gotta do it right. We get, or it's stupid.
Just a thought, was if you find out that, um.
Delete it.
That can be done, maybe modify your policy that if a business comes in and, and requests this, then an assessment will be done.
That's, that's, we're mumbling to ourselves up here right now, um.
Cause it's not clear. You'd have to get the listers to agree to that.
Yeah, oh, well, yeah, and, and we'd have to get the town to agree.
Or, or just use a third party, like, you just need a baseline number.
The thing is, if you've got something legal from, from the state stating that this is the way it is, so you know what you've got to go on. You can't just keep, well, we'll do this, we'll try this.
I have no doubt that we ran it, we ran this in front of, in front of.
Somebody.
Somebody, but I can't tell you who it was, and I, and it, the first thought is, is Blumer, but, um.
Or V L C T.
Or V L C T, but it's, we've already seen the holes.
Well, I think we wrote this with the intention of it being a new business, a new build.
Right, and didn't even think.
But that said, our intent was to encourage business development in the town for hate.
Yes, it is.
So, I, I do wrestle with the fact that, you know, maybe people would do improvements to their buildings and get lower tax rates, and we would, you know, maybe we would have a flood of these coming in.
But now we know it's lower than, lower than the new, the improvements would be normally, if we did that.
I, I understand, I understand the desire to, 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 to know what your next step is. But I don't think you can change the next. You, you can't, uh, like, if your house burns down today, you're still gonna pay the taxes on that property, as if the house is still there.
Until April. Right.
And you might come to the BCA and abate it.
You might get the abatement afterwards.
But you have to go through that step, okay? That's an abatement. That's not a reassessment, reevaluation.
That's right.
Okay?
This is different a little bit, though.
So, that being the case, we're not, it's not an abatement issue, it's a tax stabilization. So, uh, the way I see it is, you got till April anyway. Okay, the, the question is, where do you start? That where, where, where does the number begin? And you have time?
We are going to enter into a tax stabilization agreement with you. I said that the last night, and I, uh, the first chance we get to use this ordinance, you're the lucky guy. And we're seeing the holes. That doesn't mean we don't want your business. It just means, I think if, if, the thing you can take away from this meeting is, is that there won't be a stabilization of the whole building. I think that's a fair of the the next, the, the questions are, what will be the base assessment? The price you paid? Or the price it, that's on the books right, or the, the assessment of the books that are on there right now, is that whatever? And then the other question is, is when we can get this all going.
Can he go to the state now?
That's what the question, I mean, that's one of the questions, the, yeah. I don't think he can go to the state. I think they would reject, I don't, I shouldn't say anything, I, I don't know, but it, it almost seems to me logical that they would reject something that didn't go through the process.
Yeah, I, I agree. You gotta go through the listers, then the BCA, if, if it's not the number you want here.
The question is whether we can up that a little bit, so at least you know where you're starting from.
The policy definitely, clearly says that it, that stabilization will begin the subsequent tax year after the improvements are completed. So, it wouldn't be pre anyway. It would be post.
Post.
It's, that's clear. It's just how much.
Right, he, he's just trying to figure out.
Well, it's for the ten percent. Yeah, you, you know, it's looking like, yeah, he's trying to figure a business plan, and we're not giving him much help. We're not, we're, we're stumbling.
Personally, I'd lean towards just following the. I'm thinking out loud, following the policy, going with the assessed value. And then rewriting the policy.
Oh, yeah, I.
And saying, we have a policy today that says basically what it says, and we need to fix it for the next one.
Well, I think we, that's what we're doing. We're just, our, our question, my question is, what's the, what is the the, the assessed value now? What is legitimate assessed value? Are we figuring the ten percent above?
Above improvements.
Above the, the improvements, are we gonna give him, you know, some sort of stabilization, improvements above a hundred and sixty thousand, or are we gonna give him, um, above fifty thousand? There's a big difference there, obviously. And I'm not a very good math guy.
He has to have a determination to see if that, if it's fair market value or not.
Not necessarily.
He's gotta go through the process here first.
If, if the, uh, by some strange event, the listers would agree that it's, you know, fair market value, thank you, I didn't think of that, then, which I don't think they will. But it's not their, it's not their.
Their policy.
It's not their history, and.
Let's get some legal answers here.
Let's get some more answers.
Says what it says. I gave it back to you.
So, that's, that's where we are, if you understand where we are. It, it probably going to be several weeks before we get this all, some sort of, uh, you know, an idea. Well, what we'll keep, through Joe, will keep you posted as to where we're at. I really apologize, I, you know, it, it's, it's not working the way we had hoped it would.
No.
And I think now we gotta just make it right on your back. Unfortunately. Thank you. We're gonna move on.
Thanks, Ken.
Well, last thing, I got.
Oh, don't worry, man.
Um.
It'll show up somewhere someday.
Pretty clear.
Yeah, and it, I think the only question we have is, is what is the value? What is the current value?
Yeah. So, who are we going to to find that out? Where are we getting that?
I think we gotta go to the state.
Oh.
I was gonna ask the listers. Ask the listers and, and. And then.
They're on it?
Then we need to, we need to find out if we can bump the process, if, if there is any value in that, and we need to know if we can just, if, if there's a fair market value, which I think is. If he goes through the process, he's gonna win. There, there's.
That's the one you gave me.
This, that's bottom line. That's history.
But that process will be.
A year.
Right, right.
Really, a year before he sees anything.
Right, and then if, the, the problem with that.
Six months plus.
Some here might be mine.
The problem.
I've got something written on mine. I got a question under that.
Here's another one. I've got another.
Well, we won't have to, don't worry about it.
All right, all right. Um, let's go, let's do some, uh, budgeting. Let's start.
We got it right here.
Start with, uh, where are we here? We're looking for revenue. I assume we wanna start with revenue, since we really haven't. Nail that down. What's our last date to do this on?
Today.
Today? Well, let's get going.
Yep.
You guys have done good, though. This, this budget, this process has gone really smooth.
You're, what I'm going to tell you, rookie. Stop putting stuff on the.
Agenda for the budget meeting.
For budget.
You're, you're doing so well.
Especially like, open-ended discussions.
You sound like my wife when I'm shopping with her.
Oh, you're doing well.
You know she watches these, right?
Oh, shit. Okay, revenue.
This thing.
Anything first and foremost, before we get going, is anything that you wanna highlight except the? Um, no. Ninety-five percent on, uh, general fund revenue.
But you're not really, it's just there's no number in there.
Yeah, so on the first page, under.
Be careful.
Yeah, under FY twenty, that first box.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are we using this?
Uh, yeah, so we do have the projector in the computer, if you guys want me to pop this up on the screen, or if you wanna just go through the paper first.
Someone looking at it anyway.
Up to you if you got it. Uh, you know, let's, let's go through the paper first, and then for the final, final, then we can bring that up, and you can tinker with it.
Okay, all right.
Um, but other than that, we did take, uh, you're, I think you're down, we are down a little bit in revenues. Um, there was some house sales in there from last year that we had to take out, cause we don't intend to sell those homes. Just because they're not gonna be there. We did have a contract with, uh, one of the other towns for fire coverage that's no longer there. And the school was giving us some cash to, to pay the town clerk, and they're no longer doing that.
Town treasurer.
Or, I'm sorry, treasurer, thank you. Um.
And we determined they're not, because she's working for them directly?
Uh, I guess with the changeover with the the union, the school district, yeah, they're just paying for it now. It's not coming through.
But you haven't adjusted her.
So, yeah, has
Right.
Yeah, we, we did see a, a loss in revenue.
So we should probably take that out of the, our expense budget then, as well, right?
I, that would, I mean, I, that would seem to, I don't know how we do it, but if we're not bringing it in, I could see removing it, yes.
That means you gotta adjust your paycheck.
It would be, it would be a salary adjustment.
Her salary is theoretically unchanged, she cut the deal directly with them.
But it's gonna become off our end of her salary.
It, it's unchanged if you take it out. If you take out the fifteen seventy-five, adjust her salary by fifteen seventy-five, then theoretically, it's unchanged.
Her salary, right, right, right.
But this is not the first budget that's changed in.
No.
No, the previous budget, I think it was pulled out of the previous budget too.
But you can't change that.
No.
No, I'm saying it went through the last time.
Yeah.
Without our thinking about it.
But no.
Yeah, so it's, we, we did lose a little bit, but
And that was, how much, twenty, twenty-five hundred?
Fifteen seventy-five. I think we since this is the last day.
I have a question. Fifteen seventy-five, they've paid into our general fund for her salary, correct?
No, they're not.
Yeah, previously, yeah.
So we were paying her out of our
General fund?
General fund, fifteen seventy-five, so her check has gotta be, fifteen seventy-five is gonna be taken from her check.
I, I
Because aren't they paying, aren't they paying her directly fifteen seventy-five now?
That's my understanding, the school pays her directly now, yes.
Because that would make getting paid double for the same thing, I mean, that's
Well, we're paying her for something she's
She's done for somebody else.
We're not getting reimbursed for it, yes.
So the only sticky part to me is that it's her salary, and she's not here, and it's the last day. So do we leave it in the budget and put it on the agenda to talk about it? Or do we just pull it?
When she was in here, that was, this was discussed.
Little bit.
Oh yeah, but, I mean, if she being paid from, if she being paid
She's not losing any money.
No, I just said, we're not gonna
Reimbursed.
Right. If we leave it in the budget, and the way her, her salary is now, she's only making another fifteen seventy-five a year.
Right. On us, that's good.
What happens if you leave it in there?
If you
Take it, and take it away from the salary.
It's not
If you leave it in there, then
Well, it's definitely coming out of revenue, either way.
Right, it's coming out of revenue.
It's out of revenue either way, was last year, is this year. You would have an extra fifteen hundred bucks in your general fund.
Yeah, but has it been taken from her paycheck?
I don't know.
No, and this, we're not, we're not gonna do anything about last year.
No, we're
We're not gonna do anything about it until July thirtieth. We're just gonna rectify it from, from our new budget on.
To do that.
I mean, we're, it's still, we're, I mean, realistically, we should probably do it now, but
Have they been paying her since July one? When they started their new budget?
Probably, yes.
All I know is that it wasn't even here in the last budget. It wasn't here. You see what I mean?
Right. Right. It's not in it, it's not here. I think we have to make that adjustment in the, in the revenue, but, on the expense side. My thoughts. What's everybody else? We're, we're eating a, we're eating a year, and, I mean, she'll have plenty of fair warning that, that there isn't gonna be that.
Well, she's being paid double for just doing the same job for this year.
Yeah, but
Yeah.
I don't know that it's worth, we've already paid half, half of it already.
I don't think you can fix. My only problem is she's not here, I'd rather do this to her face, I'd rather have this conversation with her.
Well, then you should have invited her. I, I mean, I, I didn't think of it either, but I mean, it's
Well, I talked about it the last one.
We did, and we talked about
Two other faces.
It was taken, it was, it was taken out of the entire eighteen nineteen budget last year.
Yeah.
The revenue was.
The revenue.
Revenue, but we didn't take the, uh, that's our mistake.
We just didn't catch it.
That's our mistake, and so
Well, I guess the argument
Sitting here, you actually don't even know if you've adjusted her paycheck.
Right, I don't.
It's in the expense budget, but that doesn't necessarily mean her paycheck has been or not been adjusted.
No, her, her salary has not been adjusted though.
Okay, then, there's your answer.
The other question is, does it fit in her MOU? To take it out or not, because is it technically but it's treasurer's side, right?
Yeah, I know, it's, it's, but it's, uh
If it was clerk-related, it would be fees technically, that we collected, her salary would remain unchanged, so I
I think you're splitting
I don't have a dog in the fight, I'm just
I think you're splitting hairs, I mean, I, we're not getting reimbursed for what we used to.
Right.
And we shouldn't.
We didn't get reimbursed for what was paid out in eighteen nineteen.
Right. Right.
Okay.
And we're, we're, I mean I mean, we can bring that, you can bring that fight up if you wanna afterwards, after the budget discussions are done. And we can make that
It's not a fight, it's just
Well, the, you can make that argument as, as another agenda item.
It's common bookkeeping.
Well, I know
You're looking at numbers
But I, I'm saying, I'm saying
Paying for something that you're not getting reimbursed for.
What I'm saying is, it is not germane to the budget we're talking about. So if you wanna bring that up
Yes, it is.
No, it is not.
Because it's in the salary side part of the budget, we're being
I'm talking, no, I'm talking about, we're talking about next budget, we're wasting time on, on this year's budget. But you can bring it up, I'm not saying it's not right.
It's still in the payroll budget right now, her paycheck has not been adjusted.
Listen to me.
It's still in there.
Listen to me. This two-well-trimmed fight, this is awful.
Yeah, I get it.
But
Forget it.
No, listen, I, I want you to understand, I'm not saying that it's not, it's not legit, a legitimate argument, it's just not part of this budget discussion. It is, it is to say, take it out. But it's not, it doesn't change this twenty budget to take the money away from now until June thirty.
But it would next year, because it would come off in this total right here.
It would come off this total, yes.
See the point, I guess, but anyways. You're paying for a service you're not getting, that's the bottom line.
We're not talking about this year.
Bob, you didn't get paid for the service for this year. It says right here, we didn't get paid for it for eighteen nineteen.
Fine, I understand it.
All right.
What I am saying, what I'm saying is, this is not eighteen nineteen, this is twenty. It's, those are two different arguments.
No, it's not.
All right, well, what does everybody wanna do?
You can't do nothing now, but you gotta move on, but you gotta make sure that, uh, it's been adjusted for the next, this coming budget.
Which we can do. We can pull this out of the salary, we can do that for the next budget, that's what I'm saying. Then we can have a discussion at a later date about whether we take it out for the rest of the remaining of this budget.
Does she watch TV?
I suspect we'll, we'll see her.
Oh, yes.
But anyways, what's where are we, so are we willing to are we willing to take that, make that adjustment on the treasurer's salary? For next year, so that would be taking the, the eighteen fifteen seventy-five.
So right now, treasurer's salary is sitting at five thousand sixty-seven dollars?
Right.
How much was it that we paid she got paid, fifteen seventy?
Sixty-seven minus.
What's, uh
Fifteen seventy-five.
Fifteen seventy-five.
That'll bring treasurer's salary down to three thousand four ninety-two.
Okay. Back to the revenue. Any other questions?
I would recommend waiting on that move until, I would leave it in, and then I would discuss it. That's all I'm saying. I'm in favor of the change.
Well, today's our day.
Yep.
Today's the day, so we have to either do it or not.
You could, you could keep the cash, but reduce the salary, so your budget would, you know, you'd have a, an excess of fifteen seventy-five, or you could, you could poach it now and not have it, I guess, does that make sense? If you left it in there, it would just be money sitting in your bank account, if you reduce salary.
It, it sounds like, I'm in the minority anyway.
I will, I'll find out what's your pleasure, folks, on that.
I mean, I don't, she really doesn't have an argument, 'cause like Jay's saying, like
I agree.
Giving the money without any work, so, but might be the way to do it, is wait
Double for something now.
I mean, there's no reason for her to be upset, she may be, but probably the way to do it is the way Jeff's proposing.
Make a decision, start your new budget.
I'll, uh, I'm in favor of Jeff's proposal.
Okay?
Either way, it's kinda kicking the can.
Yeah.
I mean, either way, we're gonna save the money.
What are we doing?
Yes, well
We're adjusting the proposal.
Why?
What, I don't agree with it, but it does
Then don't do it.
I just, I'm just saying, everybody, we're talking the new budget, we're talking the new budget, so if it's taken out, it's taken out the new budget.
He's, he's, he's proposing leaving it in, just in case she gets mad.
That is kinda what I said.
Either way, we're gonna save the money.
Saying that way.
It sounds awful, yeah, but it is. Every once in a while, we gotta make a decision that isn't the best for everybody, I mean, it, it sucks to be us, but
I guess everybody knows we're working budget, so Yeah.
Either way, we're gonna save the money.
Don't worry about it.
Whether we leave it or not, correct?
But she's getting the money.
She is getting the money.
She's getting the money, either way.
I mean, so
Take it out.
Take it out, I agree, take it out, John, you said, take it out.
Done, taking it.
Take, we're taking it. So we're, we're
Taking it from the
Revenue, or from the, uh
It's out of ball.
From the expense side.
I see the expense budget to the revenue budget, to agree with the revenue budget.
That's a very nice way to put it, you, you should be a politician.
He tries.
You got a bowl of papulum over there somewhere.
Uh, okay, so anything else on the revenue that's outstanding?
No.
Go ahead.
I, on that particular point though, if we're, if there is a change in salary, I think you'd actually have to vote to change that salary. You pulled, you pulled the money away, but we didn't change salary yet.
Okay.
So I would need, I would need a vote to reduce that treasurer's salary now to three thousand four ninety-two.
Or will that just be when we approve the end?
I think it's a salary
They're not voting to change the town treasurer's salary. Just saying, they're gonna make, they're gonna remove the school salary to be consistent with the fact that we no longer, the town no longer gets the school revenue.
That hurts, huh? I don't care, let's vote on it and we'll, and we're done with it.
And I need a motion for that.
All right, my motion to, uh, the town treasurer, thirty-four hundred, line thirty-four hundred ten. Reduce that by fifteen hundred and seventy-five dollars, as she is getting paid from the Slate Valley Modified School District for that position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, more? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, one applause.
For the aforementioned reasons.
Yes. Yeah. All right. Any other questions? Any other questions on the revenue?
Uh, where does the fund balance figure in to this budget so far?
Well, you guys haven't
We haven't done that yet?
You guys haven't used any fund balance, so if you, if you decide to move some cash, no, it's, it's magic hour.
So there's, am I wrong in seeing that there's a hundred and eighty plus a hundred and sixteen?
I think so.
I don't have this sitting right here.
Here, you can have that.
Thank you.
And where do you want that fund balance to be, what's the auditor saying?
What's the hundred and sixteen?
The general fund, uh, highway.
That's highway.
Oh, that's highway.
You got a hundred and sixteen
So highway has to say in highway, but it could
I thought you were saying it was a hundred and sixteen from last year, I, I didn't know what the, what the
We, we dropped about twenty thousand back into the account this year.
This is the fluid fund balance, not the actual surplus from the year.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, how much, yes.
How much is it?
So the one ninety is probably where they want it, but the one sixteen is up, uh, sixteen, like twenty grand, twenty thousand? So we could take twenty thousand, put it into like a public works reserve.
You could.
Something like that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, you had it backwards, that's public works, that's general fund.
Did they do it backwards?
Yeah, this is public works, and this is general fund. Public works has a hundred and eighty, general fund has a hundred and sixteen.
Yeah, that's the one I got. So how much is it gonna be here?
So we actually went down on that one.
Little bit, yeah.
How much are you proposing?
I think that's a good idea.
But it'd be, it would be on the general fund side, so it'd be more like a streets and sidewalks or a grant match. Right?
Yeah.
But this sounds funny to me. Cause why did we, we let a hundred and eighty thousand roll over in the general fund on the public works?
Over here?
Over, yeah.
No, it wasn't one year, it, it
Last year, you, last year, you was like
But you are lending yourself to just, uh
Ninety thousand last year.
Did this most recently.
Nope, I don't.
What is it, what, what would it be this year?
I just like, kinda keep the fund balance steady, more than
Well, the
Cause that's your surplus.
Yeah, the accountants want you to have
A big one.
Yeah.
I just don't love it to
Thirty percent or something over
To grow in leaps and bounds unchecked, not in an allocation.
I must have more shit in the office or something.
Uh, Jenny and I did talk about
Does that make sense?
It does, uh, she, and I asked her what number she felt comfortable with, and she said ninety to a hundred thousand, she was comfortable having sitting in that account. Anything above that is, uh, I don't wanna say bonus money, but
How much money's in there now?
She's comfortable with ninety to a hundred sitting in the account.
How much of, over that is in there now?
So sixteen eight, over a hundred.
Right.
So I, I would
That's in the general fund.
You're pretty safe with sixteen thousand in the general fund. And then I guess, I'd be tempted to use some of the hundred and eighty to take care of some of that debt service where we have our huge
Yeah, like the loader.
Our huge jump on the loader.
The loader, yeah.
Like maybe even just pay down some of those loader payments, wouldn't anybody hate that idea?
I don't hate it.
I never, I never
Make a You got, you hate it?
No, no, I think that's an awesome idea, I hate having debt, um, the, I think you owe ninety-seven thousand on that loader. So if you, you could literally wipe that money, wipe that loader out.
I don't know if I wanna go that far.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
You could do half of it, you could do the eighty
Sixteen eight.
Okay, sixteen, but I'm looking at the, at the public work, so you could do, if you did eighty, you'd still have a hundred in there.
What's the auditor want our fund balance in public works to be?
The auditor?
Yeah.
Oh.
Typically, he's giving us numbers, right?
Well, that's the previous auditor.
Yeah, we, yeah.
I don't know if the current auditor is doing
We jumped from two thousand sixteen to seventeen, we went from ninety-five to a hundred and eighty-three.
Mainly 'cause we didn't do some
We need another ring of paper here. Here with an L.
But I, yeah, I thought he wanted us somewhere in that
To wheel dolly.
Well
Hundred range, so I guess my motion would be, I would make a motion to put the sixteen eight, which is sixteen thousand eight hundred ten, over a hundred from the general fund balance into the grant reserve, grant match reserve. Because we know we've been using that. And I guess I'd do that one, and then
You wanna do it separately?
Let's do it separate.
Yeah, this is, is, everybody understand what Jeff's proposing, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, so, so there's a hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred ten dollar, eight hundred ten dollars.
Adjusted fund balance.
Adjusted fund balance. I'm proposing to bring it down to a hundred, so.
But what's your motion?
To use, to fund the grant, to move those funds into the grant fund.
The whole hundred and sixteen thousand?
Just sixteen eight, ten.
Sixteen thousand.
Eight hundred ten dollars.
Eight hundred and ten dollars into where?
Grant match reserve.
Oh, gotcha. Now, I need a second.
John was all over that until you interrupted him.
He was whether you.
No, she had to be clarified.
You wanna go back into the budget?
I didn't get any.
Excuse the fun clarify, clarify.
Yeah, we could, but.
You don't.
I don't. Ask the rest of everyone.
And then, I guess I'd, I'd be tempted to do, let's just use a round number, like.
Well, you have to vote first.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Somebody's gotta be the chairman of the house. Thank you.
Bring it clear, bud.
Everybody understand what we're doing? This is the grant fund. This is the, uh, general fund to the grant fund now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
And then, I don't know, what's everybody feel about the public works fund balance?
Well, the budget's a hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and forty-three now. Just inhale thing that I'm gonna chart here.
I guess, I guess my recommend would be.
It's not the budget.
Well, no.
I guess my recommend would be to take like thirty thousand of that and put it into.
Toward the new loader, put it toward the loader.
Well, let's put it in the public works reserve, and then we won't have to fundraise for whatever they come up with next.
Thirty thousand?
It doesn't bite down the budget, but it helps with the next one.
You're getting a start for a reserve fund.
Right.
What you're doing.
You're adding to it, what's.
Add into the reserve fund.
It doesn't touch our budget.
Plus what we're gonna add.
Cause you know something's coming.
Right.
You're writing down the next one.
Right.
Right. And that gives us an opportunity.
Is that a terrible idea? And I could, I would go to forty if the people wanted that, but.
That would leave us with a hundred and forty in there.
Yeah.
I, I think forty's more better.
Forty, my motion's for forty, into public works.
You know the spell S, more better.
Make sure that makes the minutes.
You guys, I dream about you guys.
It may be most bestest.
Forty thousand.
We're going to forty thousand into the, into the reserve fund, the highway budget reserve fund.
For the vehicles or whatever.
Equipment reserve fund.
Yes.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Everybody understand what we're doing?
We did it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That was actually kinda fun. I don't really.
Well, we clarified it.
Get to do that that often.
We didn't.
Spending money without paying.
Yeah, well, we, spending money, we've already collected, let, let's be honest.
But that's.
It's a good way to do it.
Yeah, because of the fact that you know something's gonna happen.
And it doesn't hurt this budget. This budget is pretty good anyways.
There's no. Nothing I missed there right now?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, Jen, again, Jenny was comfortable with stuff sitting, I have about a hundred, so.
That's one.
Okay.
I, I trust her.
And to be clear, that, that public works budget was pretty tight last year. That was really from the year before.
Yes, it was, yeah. Mostly, yeah.
Okay. Are you getting that? Which actually doesn't affect this budget.
Not really.
We're not changing anything there. It's revenue, though. Do you have to put it in?
Well, it won't hit your revenue lines.
No, what is it?
No.
No. Something we're gonna add.
If, if you were to buy down your tax rate, you'd put it in your revenue.
As carry forward.
Yeah. And then it would, you know, just offset what you had to raise for taxes.
Which we did something last year, right?
Two years ago.
Two years ago, never mind. All right. So, there's nothing in there like that. So, it's just this number, right, that we need to talk about?
Yes.
Amount to be raised?
No, the amount to be raised, that's all, that's just based on your budget. So, we're gonna take your bottom line budget number and then subtract out the, the revenue, non-tax based revenue. And that number that's left is going in the top. That, that's your property tax covenant.
Right. Do you have to, we, we have to pass that tonight?
Yeah.
Well, you have to pass your budget tonight, and this number's not gonna, you won't know this number until election day. When, when all the appropriations are passed and everything goes into the bottom line budget.
Oh, we set the tax rate.
No, it's after that. It's when we have the whole grant list and we set the tax rate.
Oh, so, okay.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Right.
We know the dollar amount, but we won't know the tax rate. Should we have a grant list?
Yes.
As of right now. What is the percentage?
Uh, the budget percentage, yeah.
It's, it's less than fifteen seventy-five.
Cause it was like.
Uh, for, so with just what you guys are dealing with, three point one five.
Three point one five, okay.
Now, all the appropriations that people voted on.
Yeah, well, we know that's.
Okay. That's not on your control.
On top of what we did.
I, I'm just concerned about what our budget is. I mean, I know the appropriation that's gonna, it's gonna hammer.
That's gonna bump it to four or four.
What's that?
Appropriations are gonna bump it up to like four point four.
It will.
Four point four.
I'm sorry, Jay, that number will be lower, cause you guys took out the fifteen thousand, or fifteen.
It won't go down that much, I'm deciding.
I don't think so. It won't change that much.
Did you guys discuss at any time the transfer station revenue?
We haven't really. Didn't?
Sounds like you're wrapping things up, that's why I'm, I, I didn't know you were done the revenue side discussion.
Well, we, we, well, that was the question I asked. The revenue, the revenue side, the users, he's down two thousand from last year, uh.
What, what's the difference in user fees and punch card sales?
Punch card sales are proposed down three thousand, and recycling income is down twenty-five hundred.
Well, what's the actual difference between the line items? User fee versus punch card sales?
Is that user fees or checks and punch cards or?
Oh, I should.
Users fees will be any, anybody that dumps like, um.
Construction, destruction.
Destruction, yeah. Construction and, and.
But that's checks, because that could, they do it.
Or is it just anybody who pays with a check?
On punch cards, it's still a punch card.
Yeah.
Right.
You're right. It still should be, it still should be the same.
It must just be.
I don't understand.
It must just be anything not on a punch card. Right?
Yeah, checks.
And. And your ten dollar fee or whatever, probably.
Transfer station fee.
Uh, what's, what's solid waste permit?
Solid waste permits.
That's your.
That's, that's, that's the ten dollars.
Good man.
Those actually should have gone up. Didn't we raise the price on those this year? No?
No.
They were ten dollars last year?
Yep.
I miss a lot of them, got it for seven.
Yeah, yeah, we lowered the price.
Lowered.
Yeah.
Did you reflect that in the two thousand?
I didn't.
Recycling tariffs are, oh.
So, trash, trash is always iffy. You know, you never know where you're gonna hit. Some, some years are like, you're bringing in more, more revenue than you expected. Some years, it just hits less. I've, I've never been able to nail it down to an exact science.
It's the construction stuff. If there's more construction, then there's more construction waste.
Theoretically, we are getting paid for that. So.
As long as you watch, watch your fees.
It's a wash, but. Whether you're guessing.
General fund.
For O one O. Bottom line, cause our revenue's down seventy-five hundred dollars on the transfer.
Yes. Which is probably pretty, I, I know recycling's going way down.
Cause there's no act, there's no year-to-date actuals on the sheet, so I, I mean, is, is there a sense of where we're at so far this year? Is that, is that justified?
I can get you an answer to that. I just gotta dig.
It's always a race to who gets to it first.
It's not a good thing to win.
To know it too well.
Three point, three point.
How much money is the O seven? Never mind, don't worry about it.
That's a lot better from where it was when we started.
Right.
Are you sure? I feel like I started at three percent, you guys added a whole bunch of money.
We're doing.
And then we brought it back down.
Yeah, but one time, one time, like almost seven, where were we at one time?
Uh.
Six something.
It was up in sixes, yeah.
We're bringing it back down.
This, this is a really good budget. I'm, I'm proud of this budget.
Oh, here we go. You're fifty when. Everything seems to be right around fifty percent.
Except recycling.
Except recycling.
The, the. Recycling is, is over at this point.
It's over?
Well, but that's not revenue.
No, not revenue, I mean, no, not revenue. Our costs.
So, transfer station.
Cause we got some more.
Transfer station, user fees, revenue are around sixty percent.
Not where they should be.
Fifty percent on punch card sales and one hundred and thirty percent on recycling.
We should be at a hundred and thirty.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm sorry.
No, these people buy them and say use them.
Yeah. So, we're halfway through the budget season, then you're already sixty percent of your revenue is in. You have thirty percent more income in recycling than anticipated.
Which is surprising.
It's, yeah, for some reason, it went nuts.
And the commodity.
Why is it going up?
Maybe, maybe the terrorists from Trump did it.
All in the last three weeks.
And they go and get all that plastic out of the ocean.
No, I, but I think it's close. There's no, I don't think there's any giant red flags.
I'm just wondering if, uh, the seventy-five hundred is, uh, seventy-five hundred dollar reduction is.
I think.
Flagged as.
I think you could probably.
A, a safety measure or?
Yeah. Based on the current numbers, you could probably viable fund. But based on the last couple of years, the trend seems to be down.
Well. Recycling is gonna go.
Would you agree with that?
Recycling's going. Uh, that's the only thing that scares me. I mean, I, it's not, it's five thousand dollars, the revenue. That's down twenty-five hundred from last year. That's probably prudent. It might go right to the roof, or right through the floor, because, uh, because China changed everything.
Big time.
They, uh, they changed their contamination rate, and it, it changed everything.
Why such a big decrease in lot sales in this segment here?
We hit a, this is, that was.
It's an outlier?
Yeah, it was an outlier. It was, everything's based on averages.
Okay.
And if there's wonky outliers, we pull those out and try and take a better average.
And what's the, uh, the rent, rent income down this lane?
Cold.
I think it's Calvin, the warehouse down there.
Yeah.
And you pulled that out, right?
Yes, that, that's been pulled, because that's, you know, there's.
Yeah, you're trying to sell the building.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which will put it back on the tax.
Yep.
Right. Sell properties down because you don't anticipate as many, anything to sell.
So, that was a weird one, to have forty thousand in there. If you take a tax sale property and then you sell it, that's, that's really not miscellaneous income, because that, that money goes back towards your tax sale, right? You pay out the money to buy the property, and then you just offset that cash with what you sell it for. There's never any extra to go into revenue, so I, I don't know why that was in there to begin with, unless you guys had a property.
So, what do you want it to be?
Well, maybe because there's an expenditure of the tax sale, so we have to cover that. Is that why?
No, no, so that would just go back right to offset your expense.
Right.
There's no extra money from a tax sale. Unless you had a property like the one on South, Thirty South, uh, Main, that would go right into your revenue. And that's why we left twenty in there, because we, if you sell the property, that money is, it's actual revenue.
Is it?
But what about that one that was up on?
We don't have to replace, we can only take what, what we need out of the tax sale and then.
This would, this property was deeded over, so any cash that comes in is the town.
So, what about the place up here on, off in West Street, that, that ended up burning?
Oh, on Willard Avenue.
Willard Avenue. Was there, was there a revenue from that?
There was.
There was insurance revenue, and.
Same.
And that went to clean it up.
That, that just took care of cleaning it up. And I don't think there's any other. We still have the property, correct?
Yes.
So, I guess the real question is what is the increase, percentage increase in the amount to be raised by taxes?
It's always the magic number.
Because it's not three percent.
It's not three percent. Because revenue is down, you'll see an increase of about seven percent.
With, with everything added into it.
That's everything. That's the whole deal.
Six hundred articles and all.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's everything. That's your, that's your whole.
Ball of wax.
That's the whole ball of wax.
And what's that?
Sticky.
Seven percent?
Seven percent.
Oh, down here.
Seven point one.
Seven point zero percent.
But, oh, so four percent is, is add-ons, roughly.
Four point four.
It's, we're seeing, it's what it is. It's our rev, the hidden revenue is really, has really caused trouble. The budget is very solid, but because there is those miscellaneous revenues that came along.
That's been a problem anyway.
So, what's this number end up being? Is that the?
That number would be where, if everything passes and your budget passes, that will be one point one eight five seven two three four. One million, eight hundred thousand, fifty-seven, two hundred thirty-four. Eight hundred fifty-seven.
Eight hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred thirty-four.
Even?
Yeah, I rounded that one.
Okay.
That includes...
That includes the appropriations. Do you want me to put this on the screen?
You can if you want.
What's, what's the number without?
You've got to this far and you haven't, so it doesn't really...
You have a good point. What's that what?
What's that number without appropriations? That big, that one million?
That big number? Without appro, without appropriations, that number is one six five five eight three nine.
Thank you.
I think that's important that they know, that the public knows what appropriations add to your budget. Cause I mean, it's, not saying any appropriations aren't good ones, but just so people realize what, what it is that goes out there.
Go from one point three to one point nine?
People still don't understand.
Not one, seven percent.
Boy, really? That's what I'm saying.
Between these two?
And I don't know why they don't understand that. And the school taxes, I think Vermont is telling us the school taxes.
Current real property tax.
School tax will kill us this year.
Eighteen, nineteen to twenty.
Is it one seven three five six oh two?
Oh, your budget was one three three.
I will be glad when his budget's over with and get the stack of papers that high in my truck out of my backseat.
Can you move it in from the backseat of the back truck, of the box and take it down?
They raised a hundred and seventy.
Oh, I keep all the budget stuff, but I just, I just wanna, I gotta clean my truck out.
Missing there, missing something.
Can't let, can't get anybody in the backseat.
I got a stack in my desk in the cellar like this.
Seven point one. Seven one.
Or, or no. With folders in it.
Yeah, you're right.
That's seventy-one.
That's, that's not that.
You're just backward.
Yeah.
But he's saying this number last year was really...
That number last year was one seven three five six oh two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know what that...
Three three one.
Yeah, I don't know what that is, but what the number reported is... Yeah, the number reported in the town report. The number reported in the town report and the number we're using for taxation is not whatever that is. There might have been a typo in it. We had a bottom line.
Yeah.
Everything? Two million, three hundred fifty-eight thousand, six twenty-four.
You're gonna give us half of that.
I'm gonna give you half of it? Well, yeah. Claire's gonna give the other half.
I don't know what you're giving away here.
Your money.
That's three is Public Works as well as, so O one and O two, oh, O one, O three.
Two million, say that again.
To, uh, total is two million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
He's right.
Six hundred twenty-four.
Now, what's that number?
Seventeen, this is the old one. What's that?
That, that number is your total combined general.
This is all.
General Fund, Public Works and...
So, what is this? Oh, I see. This is without...
But that's funny because that, these are all wrong.
There's, there was some issues in the last, in the previous.
Yeah, I'm just making sure that, the only question it brings up is if there, if that whole group is wrong, how, are you pretty confident in these numbers?
I'm one hundred percent confident in these numbers.
Okay.
I, I've gone over this and Jenny's gone over this multiple, multiple times. It's...
Good, solid budget.
It's, I'm very proud of this budget.
Do we have numbers we can go on? Unless anybody's got any other things to add to it? Or should we just stop beating this dead horse?
I say we don't figure it out here. I just think that...
You guys will only vote on the general and the Public Works, right? You guys won't vote on appropriations?
No.
No.
So, that number for the general fund and the Public Works budget is two million, one hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars.
No sense?
No sense. Round it out.
Put it on this board.
That's the amount that needs to be raised by taxes? No.
That's the total budget.
That's the total budget. And what's this?
That's the same number.
Okay.
I can't tell you, man. I really can't talk about it. I said, you're back to two, three?
Yeah, one, three in our financial statements.
I'll make the motion that we set the budget at two million, one hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Is that the correct number, Joe?
Two, three, five, eight, six, three, four.
Two, three, five, where is the two?
Well, that's the appropriations.
I want two, one, five, seven, two, two, nine, right?
I think, yeah.
Two, one, five, seven, yes, sir.
Two, one, five, seven, two, two, nine.
I'll second Bob. Second, okay. John seconded that. Everybody understand what we're doing? Comfortable?
I'm gonna actually...
I'm just saying we're ninety-four percent on revenue. So, he's, he's right. I mean, that's solid numbers. Okay. No, I'm good.
You good?
All those in favor?
I think so.
All those in, opposed?
Worst case, we'll be back tomorrow.
Yeah.
I can, you, you won't have to.
You see what I'm getting at?
I do. I hundred percent see it, but I don't have the answer.
I know.
I know that these numbers are...
You know you're right.
I know I'm right. I just don't have the answer of what this is.
That's all you need. The note, anything else is to be determined, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We didn't even use the projector.
Sorry.
I had a good picture of my cat.
I have a great grandchild. You're not impressing me.
Yeah, look at my cat.
Awesome.
You should put her up there. All right.
Thanks, Joe.
You, uh, the parking lot issues are there. And still in the parking lot.
Yeah. Hey, those are new parking lot issues.
Yeah, sale of Calvin Drive.
Yeah, that one's on.
Police department training, uh, reimbursement agreement.
Yeah, well, we talked about if, if, you know, we pay to have a, a police officer trained and then he leaves after...
Right, 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 right. Yeah, absolutely.
So, I'm pretty sure that's unenforceable.
Let's find out.
I'm pretty sure that there was a local guy that...
Tested that.
Tested that.
I've heard.
In another town. I'm just not gonna throw out the name.
That's Oliver?
Hmm? Yeah.
I know the sheriff does do these similar things with their guys, but I don't know, like you say, on the other end.
I, I'd just like to find out. I mean, I hate, I mean, I, I just hate that, to think that we train people and we can't, we don't ever get the, the return.
I like it.
I mean, I, I, it doesn't seem like an unreasonable thing. People...
Actually, he'll retain.
Yeah, and, and I mean, it, it, I don't know. Let, let's see what we can find out about that. That's...
It was just...
When you're bored and you don't have anything else to do.
Yeah, we need to take the budget over, so now you go...
Tomorrow you'll wanna start water sewer.
Yeah.
Yeah, water sewer's starting up.
Yeah. No kidding. Uh, okay. Are, anything on the, the parking lot that anybody needs to talk about?
Do we have copies of all these yet?
Whatever.
Like the safety ribbon policy and then you have the, you haven't done, um, you're working on them. We don't have them yet.
You know, the, the police policy, I shared one of the rough, rough drafts, but I wanted to pass it by the chief and, um, then have you guys take a look.
In other words, these other things you're working on, right?
We're working on all of that.
Okay, well, that's, okay.
It helps me stay on task if I put it there and then you guys can ask me, what are you doing?
Okay.
Well, no, what have you done?
Yeah, what have you done?
What have you done with yourself? All right, so, board roundtable then.
I guess not. Oh, just have him put something that hole in the hill.
Yeah, I got a big one coming.
Patch to patch.
Patch to patch. My turn.
Mm-hmm.
Zar, sidewalk sander broke.
Sidewalk sander?
Yeah, is it broke?
You're just short of people to run it, right?
No, yeah, we are short staff, but I'll get those guys out there to sand.
At least sand it from the town office over here and shovel that pile of snow at the end of the sidewalk. And the other thing I have, uh, and I've talked to Joe about this, I asked him about putting in to get, see if we can get some of the grindings from Twenty Two A for building a pad up at the airport for our future salt shed. Need you to get anywhere of that, Joe?
Grindings from Twenty Two?
I did. They're gonna, let me see if I have...
What they're gonna do?
Yeah. Um, they're gonna give us a maximum of five hundred ton of that and then any street signs they pull out and, um, just gonna throw away. They're gonna give those to us too.
If that's the case, we gotta go and get a spot.
Ready?
Get the salt off. Get the salt off. Gotta go down at least, you wanna go down at least eighteen inches.
Yeah.
And then we sell topsoil.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, but I think you should go down at least, you know, figure out, figure out the size of the building, what you're looking at or the area you want. And then you can go back and figure your five hundred ton and how much, how deep we can go with what we've got. And it, it does, it will put a hell of a base on there. I mean, the base, if you make a good base and put fabric underneath it.
Oh, I gotta do that.
And put the...
That way it won't move.
Need eighteen inches though?
Oh, God, I think so. Oh, what do we put in that road up there?
Uh, probably.
You put the fabric down there.
I did.
We put Christ, two footing spots up there.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right.
I mean, and then, you know, and where...
Probably twelve, twelve to eighteen. You're probably right.
And then would, if you're gonna put a pad, if you're gonna put a pad on top of the outdoors or something, you gotta have that movement all the time if you got that everything underneath it.
And they gotta be there to, uh...
Roll, put it in at the same time.
You know, flatten it out and roll it.
You gotta have, you gotta have a dozer or something there while they're dumping it, so.
You won't, you won't, you won't, you're gonna love it.
Which that's not a big deal. I mean, we can get, we can get a local guy to come in for that.
I didn't know we were building a building.
No, it, it, no, it's preparation.
Okay.
It's just getting a, a spot where you wanna put it.
You're away from getting it.
But we're looking at a salt shed. I mean, that's not, not a building. A, a place to put salt and sand. And if you do it like we talked about, putting up that temporary, that hutch type building, and would you, you put in, you know, the cement blocks on the side and then build your Jersey barriers and then build your building on top of it.
That'd be pretty nice.
Well, and not that, but you can buy more salt. You could, you could get a better price than the deal in the salt. And the salt and the sand, you just put barriers right down the center of this building and have it on both sides and you got everything under cover.
That's, that's really good thinking and, I mean, it's gonna save a lot of money.
You know, and you got, we got power for anyways, so if the loader was left there, you can plug it in, so you don't worry about it, you know, being, but it'd be undercover though, which would be a nice thing. You understand, sorry? I think, I think we should look into, if we can get that stuff and put a base in up there, we gotta look at the one in buildings.
Two grants in for that, so hopefully those come through.
If you can get that up there, just get it away from down there to get away from where it keeps saying we're polluted.
Who should, uh, pick the location up there?
Where the hangar was.
Would go further out.
I would go further out because if you want, if you're gonna put a building up there someday, you'd wanna put where the hangar was.
You don't wanna...
Right next Kendall's house.
From the gate. They're also gonna put some kind of plaque or something up there too, aren't they, for the airport, historical society or something?
I didn't know that.
Well, I think they've talked about it. I don't know if they're gonna do it or not.
They saved some boards, right?
Yeah, the door, the doors there and, and I know where that is 'cause that's up in my garage. Anyways.
You haven't burned it yet.
Yeah, I'd probably go on the...
It's a good thing to save.
I'd probably head on the other side.
They saved the wood saw from here.
You'd wanna go the drier part or even if you went toward, even if you...
Well, you're gonna make it dry. You're gonna put...
Even if you went toward the, the armory.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
That end, the armory end.
Yeah, I think we're all in the same area.
Yeah, I just, I think it's, I, I think it saves some money. And if we get that stuff for nothing, you can figure what you'd have to put in there for fill.
Five hundred tons, not that much, right?
That's a lot.
Five hundred more than you had.
Fifty loads?
Good boy. I got one.
Twenty ton loads.
Cause they're going all the way through. That's a lot of tons.
I mean, it's, anything's a start, even if you got just a base.
Right.
You put it in and, and put something else in there afterwards.
What do they do with the rest of the grindings?
A lot of it goes back and they, they reprocess it and they run it through the plant again.
Certain percentage goes back into the new pavement.
Yeah.
But I would think, I would think the town would be able to get anything that's within the town.
I would too.
From up here by the bridge, the, our main drag.
No, I know.
Or where the, what is it, by the Grand Union, that's where the sign is, right?
Yeah.
There, down through, I would think. Maybe that's five hundred ton down through there, Jack.
Because remember, it used to be fifty all the way right to that sign.
They're gonna go down. They're going down.
Test it every time.
I think you're going down four inches or five inches.
Oh, it's a lot.
I think it's... And we have to have a meeting notice if we come, like, were to come to this meeting, Joe?
I won't be here, so.
I won't either.
So, I don't think you're gonna, you're not gonna have three people.
I just wondered, that's all.
What's that, no?
The meeting with the water people.
Oh.
Oh, oh, oh.
They can't make time.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be able to make it. I have to be in Rome. That's what we got paid help for.
Yeah?
Financial reports. Oh, my God.
John, you got anything?
No, I already did it.
Nothing.
All right. Uh, the only thing I got is, uh, our representatives, our, Bill is vice chair, Wayne's the means.
Yep, I noticed that on the...
So, that's, that's big doings. And Bob, I believe he's still in the same group, appropriations. Last, the last year, the last year, which I didn't know until the other day, uh, they kinda let him lord over, uh, transportation. So, you might wanna keep an ear out and see maybe they're, you know, talk to those guys, maybe invite them in to a meeting and, you know, just tell them what we're, you know, there'd be a good, a good time to talk about the, the outlet bridge, that kind of thing like that.
The Hamster Bridge.
You know, I mean, I, I don't know if that's gonna be the same this year, if he's gonna get that same kinda, it, it's, it's, in those, I think what happens in that case is, is it's not, but he has final say, but he's...
He can, he can kinda move things around.
Moves around, moves that part of the budget around and, and presents it to the committee, so, so those are, um, pretty powerful.
That's a couple, that's a couple of new projects to put out there.
Yeah, so, so we may wanna, may wanna buttonhole those guys as soon as we can.
There was a, there was a study in that bridge, correct?
Oh, yeah.
And there's a, there's a, the, the building, new bridge and everything else there, correct?
Yeah. Yeah. I've got it. It, it's...
I got a copy of it still.
Nineteen, I mean, uh, twenty fifteen, I think.
Yeah, that's about right.
I think is the study, so it's twenty fifteen money. It's, uh, the, the option that is most viable was five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
What would cost?
What would cost? What, no, what it would cost.
Cost the whole bridge, for the bridge.
Um, that's the engineer's estimate. Um, obviously, that's a little old and it's, um, remember that, there was like four different...
But that was just two lane bridge.
Two lane bridge.
Two lane bridge with the, with the pipe going across for the, for the sewer.
For the sewer.
Yeah. That's...
Did they, did they recommend?
That was single.
No, it was, no, it was a two lane.
When they did the study, did they recommend a two, two lane bridge or a one lane bridge?
They didn't recommend anything. They, but...
They recommended not putting, or didn't they?
No, they didn't. They, they just gave us the options.
But they definitely recommended not putting a single lane bridge in.
Right, right.
Yes.
It's just not...
That was my question.
Not safe, according to them.
Well, most of the abutment and everything is, is pretty sound. It's just a matter of building the bridge.
Wasn't it a slab brought in there or something like that, pre-did?
That bridge originally came from Riverside.
No, no, the new one.
I thought they just, I thought they just rebuilt, I thought they just rebuilt it.
The new one is, is just a, a steel girder. The, the, the option we looked at the most, the, the option that's, that's the cheapest. You can spend a million if you want or better.
I'll bet, yeah.
But the cheapest one was five sixty-five and I happened to have that in my truck when I saw Canfield, so.
Yeah.
I didn't see the right guy, but I...
Came home.
Yeah, but must have to be bigger, of course, if they put...
A little bit, but, but I, I think, I think it's, I think it's based on using that abutment, so.
At least it's some numbers, at least it's something.
Yeah, it's something to show out of, but we should...
But you're right. If we can get them, if they're in the right committees up there, they might be able to move some things along.
They've got some power.
Look at the little one in and make it a one-way bridge. Yeah. Cause what you really want is not to make that corner, right? It's a safety thing.
Yeah.
So, just make it one way.
It would straighten it out more if you put one on the other side.
You know what I mean? If you wanna. You got the jobs.
Yeah, I don't know how much money you save, but I thought you...
I don't know anything.
I don't know. It's worth asking. You got some budget numbers or some monetary?
Checkbook, three hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. And a motion to pay the general fund warrant, sixty thousand, nine hundred seven dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Second?
Well, it's a seventh.
Does anybody? I second it.
All those in favor? All right.
Hi.
All opposed?
Motion for payroll warrant, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second? Second. All those in favor? All right. All opposed?
All right. So, I think that we have to go back and do executive session at eight forty. You guys are late.
Time. You know, I ain't done bad.
You wanna make that motion, John?
I'm going to. Motion to enter executive session, discuss confidential attorney-client communications made as a part of legal... To the board with the town manager present. Discuss confidential attorney-client communications made as a part of legal service to the board with the town manager present.
Second. All those in favor? All right, all those opposed? We are in executive session. We will recess for, take TV breaks down.